Are you guys ready? Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Madam Hassan Ahmad. What are we doing?
Here.
Nancy Brier.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
Present.
Tom Wenzel is absent. Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Before I start today's meeting, I just want to have a quick couple of discussions. I got a phone call from Councilman Wenzel. He has asked me to inform the residents, those at home here in attendance with us, that he is facing, he was actually struck in the back of the head while he was working at Divine Child. He was doing a crosswalk volunteering. He was struck with a ball. He has a concussion. He is doing better, but his doctors asked him to rest and stay home. So he will not be here at today's city council meeting. But he wanted everybody to know that he's doing fine. He's okay, and he'll be hopefully in attendance with us at our next city council meeting. Second thing here is I want to give a moment of silence for Director Lefevre. He's our ordinance director. He recently lost a family member. His brother passed away. I know him and his family are taking it tough, so I'd like to do a quick moment of silence for Director Lefevre. I'd also like to do another moment of silence. Angela Venegas is present here with us today. She recently lost her 14-year-old pup. It's been a part of their family for 14 years. Angela, my condolences to you and your family, and I'd also like to have a moment of silence. Thank you so much. Next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, pledge of allegiance to be led by our firefighters who are here present with us today.
Pledge of Allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. May be seated. Can you update the new agenda? She's going to let them know. Thank you, Sue. Next up, we have a city council resident recognition.
Riyadh, Row, come on up. Tonight, we're recognizing a special individual in our community.
Good evening, everyone. You know, if I seem a bit nervous, I promise you it's not because of the crowd. It's actually my wife isn't today, so I'm going to be on my best behavior. Tonight, we're going to recognize Riyadh Marad. He's currently our Act 78 president, and we want to recognize him for his service to our community. Riyadh is a product and son of Dearborn Heights, born and raised in the city and a product of the Crestwood District. He's now residing here with his wonderful wife. Riyadh has never distanced himself from the people and the place they shaped him, and said he has chosen to invest his time, talent, and energy back in this community tonight, and we honor him for that service. His role as president of Act 78 Civil Service Commission, Riyadh has demonstrated unwavering leadership. When the very principles of fairness and transparency of our police and fire promotional process were being challenged, Riyadh did not hesitate. He stood his grounds. He defended the act, and in doing so, defended the integrity of our public safety institutions. His efforts has ensured that the men and women who served the city are protected by the due process they serve, and for that, we are grateful. But Riyadh's commitment to justice extends far beyond the city government. Through his legal practice, he has built a reputation, not only as an outstanding attorney but an advocate for the most often overlooked. His firm has been placed, a place of refuge for individuals with no money, no power, and often no one to speak for them. Riyadh has stepped in for so many people, not out of obligation but for principle that are often at no cost. One moment in particular speaks volume when peaceful protesters in Ann Arbor were unlawfully arrested in Ann Arbor. Riyadh didn't just watch on the sideline. He offered legal representation, free of charge, defending their constitutional rights, reminding us all that the law must be protected to everyone, not just privileged or well-connected. That's not just legal work, it's public service. And Riyadh, your career reflects more than just legal expertise, it reflects the moral courage. You have stood firm when it most mattered. You've used your position not to elevate yourself but to often lift up others, and for that, you've remained grounded to the city that raised you. And I've been told you have other skill sets, but we're going to keep that for another occasion. But tonight, we thank you for your leadership, your integrity, and reminding us that the strength of the city lies not just policies but in the character of those defending it. And it was with great pride we present to you tonight the Dearborn Heights Stringer Service Award. Off they had it open. I want to thank you for your unwavering support to the city of Dearborn Heights and the community.
Councilman, I think his wife is here. Maybe we should have his wife up, too.
I got a few comments I'd like to save, but I'd rather save them for another day.
For the picture, at least.
Yes, you should be there.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Saab. Let's give him a round of applause. What you don't know is actually Councilman Saab really admires Attorney Marad here and president of Act 78. He made him his own plaque on his own expense, so let's also recognize Councilman Saab for that. That was very kind and heartfelt. I got to tell you, Marad is actually younger than me, but I've always looked up to Attorney Marad. He's somebody that, as he stands behind me, has always had my back, has been a huge supporter to the city of Dearborn Heights, and kind of like a lot of our residents that are here in person, Angela Venegas, Vince Strupkowski, Margaret King, even at home, Rachel Lapointe. Riyadh has not missed a city council meeting online, on Zoom, in the last five years. This man is committed to Dearborn Heights. He serves the city in two ways, as a resident and as the president of our public act, our Act 78 Commission, making sure and ensuring that we're hiring some of the best individuals amongst our police department and our fire department. And, Row, not just as our president of Act 78 but as a brother, I love you, I admire you, I appreciate you, and thank you for everything that you do for us. More importantly, we also love his mother-in-law, his dad, his wife, his mother, everybody in the audience.
We're all in the crowd here.
So let's recognize them as well. Do you want to take some photos with you over here in the back? Thank you so much.
Riyadh, come on up.
Ms. Marad, please. She's also a teacher. Let's call her off now, Ms. Marad. I'm wearing different pants than my suit jacket. I didn't know we were going to do this picture. One's obviously more comfortable with her body. One more. One more. There we go. Okay, thank you.
Glenn, get up. Can I get a picture with him, too?
And now I have a Facebook陌em. I've been watching you two months.
On Zoom?
Two months.
Row, if you'd want to give a few words of more than welcome, please. Angie, you didn't know about Riyadh Marad watching city council meetings. Macy, you want to go up? Maybe a picture with the parents, Mr. Marad. Guys, please stop up and take some photos. Please stop, take a picture. Get up.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate this more than I could say. I'm totally caught off guard. They told me I was going to be here for a different reason, so I had no idea. Thank you, guys, for psyching me out and finding a way to bring my dad and wife and family here. You know, I love Dearborn Heights. I've always loved Dearborn Heights. I talk about it all the time. I think we have the best city in the world, and I love that I get to serve the city. I love that I get to practice law in the city. I love that I get to network and communicate with all of you, and thank you, guys, for all you do and your hard work, and I really appreciate the recognition. Thank you so much.
We appreciate you. All right, I want you to meet Angela Venegas, please.
I know, I know, I've been watching you guys.
Uh-oh. They've been called. They got a call.
Next up, we have the agenda approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the regular meeting of June 11, 2025, as submitted.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? I have a quick discussion. Man, did I bring my pen? I did. And respectfully so, Councilman Wenzel sent me a message asking us that we tabled the fire station and to not be voted on tonight, but ultimately, that goes on the majority of this council, and I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up the information in which he requested me to specifically and all of us to do here. If there's anybody here that wants to make that motion to table it, you're more than welcome to today, and if not, we can make this vote and keeping it on. Guys, please, hang on. Nothing from the audience. Seeing none, motion moves forward. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
There's no motion. Well, the motions for the agenda approval.
For the agenda approval, okay. Yeah. All right. Let's redo this. Motion to approve the agenda. Please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have minutes of the special meeting of May 27, 2025.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the special meeting of May 27, 2025, as outlined in four, A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Got my phone? Was right there. Next up is minutes of the regular meeting of May 27, 2025.
Council Chair.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the regular meeting of May 27, 2025, as outlined in four dash B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have public hearings and public comments.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I'd like to put a comment out there before the residents get up regarding the fire station. I ask the fire station to be put back out today for a few reasons. I actually went out of my way for the past couple of weeks since the last meeting, speaking to our engineer, speaking to the experts that have been on the field, and did my research. And based on what I got back, a lot of people are spreading misinformation regarding where the fire station is going. And I'll always say this today, and I'll say this anytime, and I'll be responsible for my consequences on this. The problem is, you can't put a motion and play with public safety because of emotions. You can risk people's safety because of emotions, and I won't allow that to happen. I know it's been a 3-3 tie across. I think it's time to move forward. Hopefully, tonight, the new fire station will be approved to be built on Beach Daily. I believe that a lot of misinformation about the flooding, about where the house is set, elevations and everything, this is my field of expertise, is false. Where it's actually, where the fire station is actually going, it's not, it's never flooded.
Councilman, can we have this discussion after?
Yes, but I just want to put this in public media, public comment. I told somebody I would, and I'm doing that, please. And I know a lot of people are going to get up here and talk, but I did my research on my own time, and I believe that my vote that I'm taking today is an educated vote, not based on emotion but based on expert facts. Thank you.
Thank you. I respect you wholeheartedly, and I don't think there's ever been a time where Councilman Saab has made a vote based on emotion. I think he does his thorough look-through on it, and I respect him on it. But we're going to take it out to public comments. How you doing, young lady? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
My name is Barbara Philpowsky, and I live in the South End, and I'm 84 years old. And I grew up in Detroit, Catholic school, and couldn't find a job that...
Ma'am, can you please state the street that you live on?
Oh, Gertrude.
Gertrude.
And so anyway, I couldn't find a decent job at 17, so I went to Walsh Institute of Accounting, and then I finally got a job in R.L. Polk in the accounting department, worked there a few years, and then got married and had a baby. My baby's right here.
My baby.
He's in his 60s, and he's retired. So anyway, what you call it, I wanted to live into South Dearborn, and my, one of my friends, her husband was a broker, and he says I couldn't afford that. And so anyway, he says, new subdivision, South Dearborn Heights. And I says, okay, I'll go see it. So I came to see, and I couldn't believe, the roads weren't even paved. It was ditches. And I mean, that's a long time ago. I couldn't believe that there was, I thought I was on a farm. But anyway, I did look at the house, and it was 16-3, which was a lot of money at that time. But anyway, I went back in the car, and I says, okay, I like it. I don't like the ditches, I says, but I tell you, if you can knock that down from 16-4 down to 16, I'll take it. And they accepted it, so I've been here ever since. And now, the problem is that I love the new fireworks law. You have to use fireworks on your own property. I do love that. The only thing is, that doesn't work for everything that's going on, because, what you call it, in back of my house, there's this huge tree, and I'm going to pass these out, you can pass it out to them, and you can go back to the last page, and you will see the tree. I'm talking, my property was damaged from these aerial fireworks because they were commercial, and when they shot them up, it took four properties.
Ma'am?
And there was, there was stuff all over the place.
So you actually get two minutes? I'm going to give you an additional minute to finish up, and I don't want you to think that I'm taking away time from you, but, so I just, I want, I want you to know, I'm going to give you an additional minute on this one, okay?
Do what?
You've got 60 seconds.
Oh. Well, you have all of it, so let's just turn to the last page right now. You can see there's a, you can read all the rest later on. That's a modular tree. What's in that tree? The electric pole, the telephone pole, everything. They were shooting into that tree, which is right in the alley part of my house, and I had stuff all the way, the whole property from front to back. And then the next page in front of that is my driveway. I had all this stuff into the driveway. You can't get it out with, you sandblasted driveway. So anyway, that's all I got to say, and there's some suggestions in here what to do about it. That's all I want to do is talk about the fireworks sometimes.
Barb, I got a great solution for us today. Today, we have our fire marshal and our fire chief that are with us, and they are going to help you on the situation. If you don't mind, get your, get their contact information over to them, and you'll get a phone call from them tomorrow morning.
Max is usually free.
But I got samples of what was in my yard.
They're right over here.
I had sticks, I had rubber pieces from these things, from the front of my, back of my house all the way to the front.
Okay. All right. Thank you, guys. Anyone else in the audience?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael McCaffrey, Roosevelt Street, Dearborn. Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm here in support today of reconsideration of Claim 38. It's a college reimbursement for one of my staff, Saba Al Hashami. Saba is a manager of the Carolyn Candy Library and has been a shining example of what I feel the tuition reimbursement program was intended for. Saba took a class towards her degree in library science at my encouragement, as such classes are necessary for library certification for state aid.
Sorry, Director, you said item 38.
Eight. Thirty-eight. Saba meets all the requirements for the tuition program. She has been with us for over 10 years. She is taking a class directly relevant to her profession and has no plans to depart. We've had two previous staff members go through this program, and one remained with us until she retired, and the other is still employed with us. The program has led to the development and enrichment of the community by allowing us to add ESL and foreign language materials and implement a number of new programs at both our libraries, including the class payment that's on this agenda. Saba has only the class she is currently taking, and the program will be complete, and we'll have another valuable staff member trained internally. I don't plan on utilizing this program for anyone in the immediate future, although should I need to, I plan to bring this to the council's attention prior to classwork. Saba has previous coursework okayed by the council as well, so I know indication this was initially out of bounds. So I humbly request council pass this reimbursement, and thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you so much, Director McCaffrey. Anyone else in the audience?
Vince Strupkowski, 9A. Yeah, I've been a resident here for a long, long time, and the only reason I'm a resident here is because my parents moved us here back in the 70s because the Dearborn Heights Fire Department had paramedics. Obviously, some of you may know, I was born with a defect in the heart, and my parents decided to come to Dearborn Heights because of the paramedic teams that they had here, and a good friend of my mother's convinced her that that would be the best place for the family to be. With that being said, I can't sit back and think about these guys living in a building that's about to cave in or fall in on them. They need a new station. It's obsolete, it's outdated, and I think, you know, a lot of us may not like it, but you know what? There's a lot of things in life that we don't like. I suggest that we pick the golf course, build the new station there, and while we're doing that, I'm sure we can get some sort of funding through grants or whatever. Look what Novi just did, or Plymouth Township just did over on Hagerty and Seven Mile there. A lot of that is a brand-new fire station along with a recreation center. Why don't we just turn the golf course and that fire station into a new fire recreation center and leave the rest of the golf course properly strictly for recreation, since we're not going to have a 36-hole golf course according to chat on social media? I hate to see that, but it looks like it was, it's going to be. So, and I do want to say this, you know, that people are saying that that pond never flooded. Like I said, I've been here since I was a little boy, and I have seen the water up to that pond level. So if you put the station at the highest level at Ann Arbor Trail and Heinz there or Beach Daily, get your best spot.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Good luck, and let's get this ball rolling.
Thank you so much.
Instead of dragging our butts.
How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Angela Venegas, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I'm here, too, at about 9A. I want to piggyback on what Vince said. I wasn't all in favor of it at first, but no one else can find a better place to put it. At this point, they need a new fire station. They can't keep living in these conditions. Hassan Saab has done his research. I've talked with him thoroughly about it. He's changed my mind, and at this point, public safety is at risk. I have, my mom is with me. She's 81 years old. If we have to rely on another city because our fire station is closed, one life isn't worth it. So a lot of us, a lot of people don't like it, but I think if Saab presents everything that he knows and gives people some knowledge, I think people would agree. At this point, no one else can come up with another place for it. So, you know, this is public safety we're talking about here. So we all, you know, we all have accidents, fire at people's houses, we can't have a response time that far away, and if they close, we're relying on other cities, and if other cities have priority calls, we're last. So you guys really need to start thinking about this. Time's ticking away.
Thank you. Thank you. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in. You have two minutes.
Okay. My name is Leila Elzane. I'm from Dearborn Heights. I live in the Gulfview Manor subdivision, and I'm off of Rouge River Drive. So I am the president of the Gulfview Manor Civic Association. We have the longest-running civic association in the state of Michigan since 1957, and I've been the president of it for around eight years now. So I'm here also to talk about 9A, the fire station, as well. Parts of Gulfview Manor, we have 504 homes in our neighborhood. Parts of them do back up to the golf course, and they also back up to Heinz Drive as well and the Field of Dreams. So we kind of back up to a bunch of different areas. Recently, I did take a tour. I haven't spoke to Mr. Councilman Saab at all about his research, but I have, like, read things about it and heard things about his research, but I took it upon myself to do my own research. I went on a tour last week of the golf course of both sites where they want to build. I got knowledge from Jason, who runs the golf course, and also the fire chief as well. It was the three of us. We drove around both sites, and I'm here to represent Gulfview Manor and say that I think the site 2A on Beach Daily would be the best for the fire station. Obviously, it needs to be built because of the living conditions that the firefighters have right now, but speaking with also some of the residents in our neighborhood, it just, all in general, with the school traffic, the fire station, the response time, the golf course itself, having it over there, like, it was just stated that they're not going to have another 18 holes up and running, but this fire station is only going to take up partial of that area, and from what I was told, they will still have holes that they could use, nine holes. They could do golf, they could do disc golf, it could be maintained to whatever they want. So it's not like it's taking up the whole course. So I'm here just to represent Gulfview Manor and the neighborhood and say that I think that the Beach Daily site would be the best location.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You timed that perfect. I love it.
I know. I had it all planned out.
And really, I want to recognize Leila as a huge advocate in our community. She's always giving back. If it's not in Gulfview Manor, it's across the city, whether in the South End, the North End, at the local schools, and so I also want to recognize her and give her a round of applause. Thank you. And serving on the board every year, she invites the entire city, the mayor, the clerk, the treasurer, and all the city council members to their annual dinner. I believe the fire chief and the police chief are also in attendance, and Leila and Amanda, you also, you guys do a great job. You guys are also engaged with, like, St. Linus, and so anytime I'm in the area of, like, talking to St. Linus, I'll be, you guys know Amanda? And they're all like, yeah, we know Amanda. So Amanda's in the audience, too. Let's recognize her as well.
My, my 13-year-old daughter is the secretary of our GM board.
Talk about engaging the youth. I love it.
Good.
How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in.
I will speak on their behalf. I know these ladies. I know all of them. They used to be my neighbors.
How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in.
My name is Lisa Hicks Clayton. I'm speaking as treasurer. I live on Gully. So real quick, I don't have anything too exciting to share with you, but I would like to share a reminder that we are preparing the tax rolls for the summer tax bills that will be mailed out to your homes the first week in July, and it will be available online by July the 1st. There's lots of ways to pay, including kiosk, online, Apple Pay, Google Pay, partial pay. We have a lot of different ways that are listed on the city website. What I want you to know, though, and I'm going to thank IT Director Cooper for his assistance with this, is we get a lot of questions about, hey, what are our taxes going to? I'm sure you do as well. So if you go online to the City of Dearborn Heights website, to the treasurer's page, you will find these really great graphics that show the breakdown of how your million dollars are being spent. So if you're curious, you can take a look there. Just go right to the website treasurer's page. Pay attention to the upper corner, upper right-hand corner, what school district is listed, because every, we have five school districts in Dearborn Heights that we tax, collect taxes for, is what we actually do. And you want to see, like, one is D-7, Crestwood, et cetera. Make sure that's the one for where you live when you look at the chart. So it's good to see, but you could see citywide, 14% of your tax dollars goes to city services. Public safety is 3%. Solid waste is 4%. Sanitation, too, our library services, which are phenomenal, 3%. So it's good just to take a look, and people can get an answer. If they have any questions, they can call us at the treasurer's office, which is 313-791-3410.
Thank you.
With your application, please call me if you have questions. Deadline is September 15th. Thank you.
Thank you so much treasurer. How you doing ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You got two minutes.
Renee Murna, Annapolis, Dearborn Heights. Well, want to tell you, I did my homework. I went over to this, to the Spirit Fest. It was phenomenal. The ground, it was so peaceful over there, such a good feeling, the families that showed up, the police officers that were there. I mean, everything was camaraderie. There was, it was just awesome. It was just awesome. So I prayed the grounds the first day to just like put a seal around it. So I'm not too sure how, but the rest of it went. But when I was there and I never heard of anything bad that came from there, just everything good. So excellent job on the Spirit Fest for everybody that was involved. And you got me so inspired with these city council meetings that I signed up to get my water meter changed, even though I was a holdout. And I convinced my neighbor to do it. So next Friday, me and my neighbor are getting our water meter. So, just want to let you know that I do pray for the city. I pray for you guys individually. I pray for you guys as a group. And I'm going to tell you something. There has been a spirit of paralysation here. And I know why it's here. It's because since I started here, I started praying that things would come to the surface and things were coming to the surface. And it kind of blindsided everybody. And I know that when that happens, people get upset because everything's coming to the surface. But I'm going to tell you, I just kept you guys in prayer and you handled it well. You came through it. I've, even today, I've prayed that the spirit of paralysation will stop, the spirit of fear will stop. You guys will move forward with whatever you decide on the fire station. I know you're going to have wisdom to do the right thing. Whatever you decide, I'm on your side. And I think the city, from watching the interactions, have gotten an education and I'm sure they're on your side also. So thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we'll move over to Zoom. How you doing ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. Barbara Running, Detroit Street.
Good afternoon, everybody. I just have a couple of things. I'm just going to agree with Vince and Angela regarding the fire station. That's what I was going to talk about. Mine is real easy. This Sunday is Father's Day. I wish everyone a happy dad, father, a blessed day for everyone. And the third thing, if we just have a five-second moment of silence for George Anne and Lynn in the clerk's office. We started the election process already for everything. It's extremely busy in the clerk's office. They're doing double the work. So hats off to George Anne and to Lynn and everyone else there. And I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none? Move on. Next up, reports from city official. Moment we've all been waiting for. City engineer?
No.
Darn it, forgot it, I'm sorry. We're not there yet. Fund transfers and current claims, guys.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the current claims and ACH wire transfers 6-1 through 6-38 as submitted.
Second, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on that?
Yes, council chair.
Yes.
That's by Robert Constant. Can I remove? One second, I'm sorry.
I got them right here.
Remove 37 and 36.
I was going to agree with those. Would you like to amend your motion? Anyone else? Any discussion?
I mean, council chair, if we remove something, either remove them all or keep them all. I mean...
So I had this good conversation and I said the same thing and I had this conversation with Director McCaffrey. Nothing against any of the two individuals versus Saba. Saba has been with our city for 10-plus years. She's taking classes to, classes that other librarians that work for the city have taken. So it's a program that Constant is being taken. If you look at numbers, you know, I don't want to give any names, but number 36, like they're taking a biology class, which is completely different than their department. And not to say that I am, you know, in favor of somebody taking a library class that's, you know, starting to become a librarian who could be potentially the librarian in the future. I'm saying that the biology class is not in the position of, and I've actually gotten it from the other people in this department as well. So I know you understand that we have to pick and choose where we can do things. I can wholeheartedly say 10, 15 years you've been with our city, you've taken a program that other people have taken that are still in this department that have taken in the past, how better to be able to serve the residents? I'm all for that.
No, I'm definitely with you, but I mean, at the same time, I think, I think a policy needs to change and I requested that last time from the administration. And by the way, where the money coming from? Since we don't have the money for this fiscal year, I know we're going to approve it today, but where the money coming from?
I think, believe Director McCaffrey said that...
It's funded from our, from the fringe benefits for...
And do you still have money?
Yeah. And he was able to break it down where the money's coming from. I'll agree with you, Councilman. He was able to break it down why he should have, this should have came in as more, he said, as a resolution, saying to pay this individual and not as a claim because this is, it fits in the realm of the librarian studying this ESL and different programs to better our libraries. And nothing against any of the other individuals, but when you're taking a program, one, I've never seen your contract, two, you're taking a program that's outside of what you're studying. Like, if number 36 was taking a criminal justice class, I'm going to say, hey man, like you have to honor that. You're taking a biology class.
No, no, I'm with you. As long as we have the money and we can pay it, I mean, it's part of our class.
Really, I did my, I looked through these backups and I was, some of the things, I'm just like, why are the city paying certain, some of these certain classes? Like I know we, we used to pay Chief Swolpes in the past, or Director Swolpes, and it was in his contract. He came in with a written signed document, like he went through the process, was studying classes that he knew would benefit him in the future, into, you know, giving back in the City of Dearborn Heights. But what we're starting to see now is like people are just leaving. You know, we just witnessed our former comptroller ask for $10,000. And, you know, she said, oh, well, I could potentially sue you guys. I said, well, then you can potentially sue us. Now they're gone. They're out the door. And imagine we paid that $10,000 and they were just gone and they, they weren't even with us for a year. So this is an individual Saba that has been with us for many, many years, studying a program that's going to help benefit our libraries and our constituents and our residents. I think this is an easy yes.
Yeah, council chair, if I may. The process is that the people put out the money first. So even if she had left, she would have paid $10,000, she wouldn't have been reimbursed by the city. And there is a process and procedure from the 2000 vote, when it went to 2001, to the non-union members and it applies, there is a procedure to follow. Sometimes one class may not reflect, there's only part of it, but it's all degree, just for the record.
Thank you, Roger. I'm going to let Councilwoman Melaskey Maxwell go next.
Yeah, I think the difference in this is, is Director McCaffrey asked her to take the class to help her with her job. She just didn't voluntarily do it. She did it because of her boss asking her and that's a different story.
Sure. I agree. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, Councilman.
Director McCaffrey, do you know, I mean, is this, maybe this is a requirement towards getting a degree? So she has to take certain classes? This is probably a requirement for her to get her, her degree.
I mean, I think all these classes...
Yeah, it's a requirement to get a master's degree and a certain amount of master-certified staff are required to be on staff to get state aid. So it benefits our libraries and institutions. So that's one reason to include.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Good afternoon. I just wanted to remind you that some of these are also in union contracts. The bearer one is in the police union contract. So not approving this benefit is a violation of their union contract. We have reviewed your request and we shared all the union contracts where tuition reimbursement has been implemented in the city. The HR director shared it. He also proposed a change that we can do. However, it is not something that we can implement with the employees that have already taken those benefits this current semester, right? So you kind of have to pay them and moving forward, starting next semester, you can start making some changes. And some of them, it's going to be easy. With other ones, with the police unions, fire unions, any union, it's going to be more complicated because you're going to have to go into negotiations to make those changes. But again, from the administration, my recommendation would be pay out the fringe benefits that currently exist and make changes moving forward. But these benefits have already been implemented and it's hard to simply deny them right now.
Thank you, Mariana. I just want you to know, I go back to my statement, when you're going to, if you're in the, if you're in the police union, and I didn't want to give out the name, but you did. If you're, if you're, I know, I know. But you guys always tell us personnel, don't say names, don't say names. But, but, but I'm just, I was playing with what you guys say, but if somebody's going to become a police officer in the City of Dearborn Heights and are taking a bunch of biology classes, you know, to get a biology degree, that doesn't...
It's not towards a biology degree. It's simply part of a degree requirement. You have general education classes that every employee has to take. And again, they're, they're all being approved by the directors. If not, they wouldn't be presented to you. So that's just a reminder. It's not just the Mr. McCaffrey that has approved it. Every other director has also approved it.
We've never seen her contract. Like it was never given to her.
She doesn't have a contract. And I've already told you, HR has shared that with you. I've shared it three times at least.
She does not have a contract?
She has the same contract that I have shared with you three times, which is the same as the elected officials and directors and department heads fringe benefits. It has been shared with you multiple times.
She showed us the fringe benefits, what was approved in the past and what we stated.
That is our contract.
She does not have a contract at all?
No. You asked HR to look into that. He provided the response with you of all of the contracts that are in existence. So again, I don't know what else you're looking for. We have provided every single contract that exists in the city and we don't know what the holdup is anymore. We've also provided recommendations of how to make the amendments moving forward. But at this point, what else do you need in order to approve the benefits that are in existence this current semester?
I'll tell you. Tell us where we're, where the money's coming from. And it's not from bounds, but something that you guys as the administration set aside to be able to tell people you could take these classes, show us where that is in that line item, how there's still remaining money to be able to pay these individuals. And then, sure, but if you're going to tell us, hey, well, you guys got to pay them, but we don't have money, but you and all, you guys have to figure it out.
Again, this comes from fringe benefits. That is a benefit. That's where all the salaries would come for, for this type of benefits.
But you're saying there's no contract?
There is a fringe benefits contract for our elected officials and directors.
Okay.
And I've shared that with you three times.
I'm not here to name names or directors, but I'd like to know when this individual started with us and when her courses started in college.
She's on her last semester.
I'd like to know when she started with us, if you could send me that.
Yep, I can give it to you right now, actually.
And when her, I'm removing it today. I want it removed, but, and...
The fiscal year is ending, so like that's, we're in a time crunch for this particular benefit timeframe.
Well, frankly, it's something, it's something that I want to see and I want to see when her course actually started.
Okay. Again, if you could just send me the list of everything you want, but this is already going on for two months, that every meeting, there's a new requirement.
But you say directors approve the benefits going to college. But every time I ask about the mayor's signature on here, somebody relates back and says, well, who has the authority? This is not the mayor's signature.
That is the mayor's signature.
It's a pen signature. It's an auto pen signature.
That is the mayor's signature.
No, it's not.
Okay.
All right, guys. Thank you, Mariana. Any other discussion?
I mean, I don't know, I didn't get the answer. Where, where's, where's the money coming from? That's, we asked that too, Council Chair, so I don't know. Do we have the money to pay it? I mean, we can approve it, but do we have the money to pay it? That's a million dollar question.
Well, I have many...
I don't know, we keep going around and around and we don't even have the money to pay it and we're supposed to approve something that we don't have. I know, but we don't have the money. We don't have the money. What is it? You have payroll, that's a million dollars. So...
All right, guys, there's a discussion here on the table, to table 36 and 37. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded to, are you amending your motion, Councilman Saab?
Yes.
Councilman Constant, are you amending, are you seconding that? Uh, Councilman Constant?
I'm looking. But I, I think we should pay it. I think it's...
We'll have to know where the money's coming from, Councilman. At least we know that the, we know that the librarian has the money and is, we don't know, we can't approve something we can't pay for.
We have no contract. I'll... I'm deciding paperwork. I'll reluctantly second removing 36 and 37.
Eliminate 36 and 37?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. First, please take roll call.
Denise Melaskey Maxwell?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Robert Constant?
Yes.
Nancy Brier?
No.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Moby Dun?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the moment everybody's been waiting for. 9A city engineer, D, the new fire station selection. Councilman Saab, since you did your research.
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved site, is it 2A for Beach?
2A.
2A. And authorize the initiation of the design phases online in 9A.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. I'm sorry, Councilman Ahmad.
Councilwoman Brier.
Any discussion? I was reading your name, by the way, Council, uh, Councilman Constant. Any discussion on this?
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I just want to thank Councilman Saab for bringing this forward again. I mean, I voted yes on it last time and I guess I did my homework before. But thank you for bringing this forward and let's go on and build that fire station for our firefighters and we do thank you for your service and definitely we have the utmost respect and appreciation for you guys.
Thank you. I will just add a couple of things. This is, this is a very tough decision. I mean, if there's anybody who knows, who loves their firefighters, it's, I'm one of the biggest advocates. I've never voted anything against our firefighters. And if my vote turns into a no today, it's still not against our firefighters. But it's most importantly, that I've stood my ground in my word in saying that once, once we allow one thing to be built on that golf course, it's no longer going to be considered a golf course. It's not going to be a golf course, a fire station and every other thing. And it's going to become a domino effect. To me, there hasn't been any type of engineering water studies. There's been nothing that tells me that in 15 years, this thing might not fall apart. And then here comes my kids who's going to be here, our future treasurer from GMA and
who's gonna be here, our future treasurer from GMA, and saying, hey, I remember sitting in this council meeting, and Imobi Dun was talking about it. Who knows? I might be the Councilman Constant and staying on here with you.
Counsel Chair.
The reality is, I'm gonna give you your moment here, Councilman, but the reality is, I wholeheartedly want a new fire station for our fire department. But we've waited three years to bring it down to the wire right before we were about to spend the money. We should've had this discussion three years ago when we got the money. Administration didn't bring this to us. We've always had, for three years, we've had the fire station, for three years, we've had the money. We waited three years though to have the discussion. We had three years to make the digs. We said we were waiting on money from the city engineer, or we were waiting for money from Rashida Talib to be able to do our, you know, our testing. I had a conversation with Rashida Talib this weekend at a funeral. Said you guys could easily do the testing. I also had a conversation with Aaron Burns just yesterday, with our treasurer. And $10 million is more than enough to be able to build what we wanna do. West Angeles built one for $7.3 million. Dearborn Heights is asking for additional $3.5, which is most likely not going to receive. The reality is, we have $10 million to be able to build a fire station, and if we could've potentially used an additional million or maybe $2 million to buy other parts of, that we don't own, because it's not gonna cost you the entire $10 million, but the $10 million could've been used for $1 million to buy land and $9 million to build something. But we waited to come down to the wire. That's the reality. That's the story that you're not being told. Instead, we're standing before here on another issue where we're last second having to make a decision. We could've... None of us here were consulted. Say, hey, what are your thoughts? What can we do? How can we help? We weren't. Yet we're the fiduciary duty for the city. That's the hard reality that nobody's talking about. So to our firefighters, I will always stand with you guys, but I've also gotta stand by my word by saying, when we made this vote on the golf course, I said I'll never vote on anything that allows anything to be built from a home, a fire station, a dog park, other than it being a golf course, because it's a green space. And the more we build on our green spaces, the more flooding we're gonna end up with. Maybe you're not gonna see floodings in the neighborhoods. Let me tell you something. The money, the $3.5 million that we used ARPA funds to fix the golf course, it's gonna find its way down to trickle somewhere, and it's gonna trickle into where you spent the $3.5 million. And we can nod our heads and say no, and we can agree to disagree. I hope that it does pass. The reality is, I hope it passes because I feel that our firefighters' lives are in danger, and you're right, public safety is a concern. But I also believe it's gonna cause more flooding. Two years down the line, we're gonna hear how something's flooding again. That's my opinion on things. My vote has to stand firm where I stood last time, not because I don't want a new fire station, because I wholeheartedly support the men and women in our fire department. And I appreciate and applaud Councilman Saab for doing his research, because he did. And he called me, and he said, hey, man, like, you really gotta change your vote. And I said, it's not about the fire station. It's not about public safety. But my word, standing here before we gave, when we awarded the golf course, I stood here before every resident and said, you have my word. This goes to the Issa Brothers and Jason. You're not going to see me ever voting to build anything on that golf course. So I'm gonna stand firm where I, what I promised.
Counsel Chair?
Councilman Saab?
I wanna put a few things in the record that are facts. Fact number one, testing was done. So you saying testing's not done, that's false. If any resident that wants a water engineer to go out, costs about $115,000 for testing, if anybody's got a check to write to the city, will gladly do it.
We have money for that, from the $10 million.
Counsel Chair, you're also putting two things at risk. Number one is the condition of the current fire station that our firefighters are living in. We know, you know, I know, it's not livable. Number two, frankly, I'll tell you this until any resident, saving someone's life, saving a kid out of a fire, and having a fire station there is worth more than the whole entire golf course combined. You cannot put land or price on public safety. And I'll say that over and over. I wasn't here when you guys voted that you would give your word. You could stipulate any motion we file or approve not to have anything else built on the golf course outside of anything for the fire department, like a firehouse or anything else. That's a simple claim there. But the thing is that we're playing here, it's emotions. You're playing emotions and politics with people's safety.
I'm not playing politics.
No, no, I'm saying, and the city itself, that's what's going on. I took it out of my way, and I bothered Mr. Deeb how many times in the past couple of weeks, more than I've called him in two years. I did my research, and the information provided as for Waitrim being a part of it, they weren't. The testing was done by an independent company. A matter of fact, I mean, I think you, the president over there, walked the maintenance center of the golf course, and that's the lowest part in the back of the golf course. It does not flood. You said about 17 feet higher than the highest point where the ponds flood. You would need either a dam to flood or a tsunami to hit. You'd gotta be elevated with Warren Avenue. That's how high the flooding would have to be for the fire station to flood, and that fire station's gonna be elevated on a different elevation. Again, we go back that, we say we support our first responders. We support them how? They're living in conditions where that fire station, they might wake up tomorrow and the inside walls might collapse. Those fire trucks are pretty heavy.
Don't put that on the city council.
No, no, I'm not putting it on the city council, but we have a duty also to put emotions aside and make an educated vote on public safety. We complain we don't have enough police officers and cars, and we're working towards fully staffing our police department. We just staffed our fire department, fully staffed it. But if that fire station closes, you're gonna have Inkster, Garden City, Dearborn in Detroit responding to the North End. Because first off, you can't send every firefighter to the south station where it's gonna be over capacity. You gotta do your numbers, and you gotta put the equation is, is the golf course worth anybody's life? And it's not. Bluntly, it's not. And whatever residents are gonna think because of the history they have with it, it's just not. And you're gonna say in 15 years, the money we invested in it, in 15 years, I guarantee you the infrastructure in this city will be updated.
Hope so.
Counselor Chair?
Councilman Constant?
Thank you. I agree with Councilman Saab. I think we have to rely on our experts, our fire chief, our city engineer. The city owns the golf course property. There's still a lot of room on the golf course for golf. I mean, we're not talking about, we're talking about a 36-hole golf course. There's still plenty of room. So I think Site 2 is a wise decision.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Counselor Chair?
Councilwoman Breyer?
I'd like to thank Councilman Saab for doing the extra work to verify what we thought we knew before. There's nothing more important than our gentlemen that are taking care of us every day and protecting us. They shouldn't live the way they're living now. So we've gotta go with Site number two.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, this is the moment of truth. Here we go. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad for the new fire station, 2A, you said?
Yes. Beach Daily.
Beach Daily, 2A.
Counsel Chair, before we go there, I would like to stipulate in this order that nothing else can be built on site, other than involves...
You'd have to actually put that to the voters to be able to vote on that. Even if we put a resolution, you'd have to put a deed restriction. It'd have to go before the voters, and then they would have to make that vote, according to when Gary was here on our last meeting. I mean, not our last meeting, but when we were doing the thing on the fire station, I mean, the vote on...
That's on housing.
No. It was a deed restriction. It had to go, it had to go before the voters, and I remember Mr. Issa, Matt Shank, and Gary were kinda going back and forth, and they didn't want it. And then we'd also have to reopen up the contract with the Issa Brothers. Technically, us even putting that in the motion wouldn't make a change.
I'm gonna bring it back at the next meeting as a resolution, or as a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
But 2A, to approve 2A's, the new fire station, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Constant?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
No.
Imobi Dun?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Congratulations to our firefighters.
Next up, City Engineer Deeb, Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF, 2024 Water Main Replacement, Change Order Number 2. Counsel Chair? Councilman Ahmad?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved Change Order Number 2 to the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, 2024 Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $62,107, which represents additional costs incurred by the contractor for materials and effort that were unforeseen and not part of the original contract. The original contract includes all pay items that are part of the change order with the exception of the two-inch service sled as outlined in 9-B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion?
Counselor Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just about, in the backup, it shows Change Order Number 1, and here is this, did we change it before? Is that typo?
No, no, it's, well, first, thank you for the fire station. Finally put us on the right track so we can get moving. Regarding the 1 and 2, we actually, Change Order 1 is contractual. There was a 1, which is where we added the ARPA money, our ARPA money to this. But contractually, because this is a 50-50 project, we pay 50% of every cost, and the state pays 50%. So contractually, this is only 1. This is Change Order 1. The state doesn't care where we got our money from. So for our purposes, it's Change Order 2, because it went before you to add the ARPA money. But as far as the state's concerned, it's Change Order 1. So contractually, it's Change Order 1. It's, it doesn't change anything. It's just that Change Order 1 before you was to use our ARPA money for our portion, and then the state money for their portion. So the state was just...
I mean, to be clear, I'm really confused.
It's not. Change Order 1, technically, for the contract itself, this is Change Order 1, as a contract.
Okay.
But for purposes of presenting to the council, when we added the money, the ARPA money, we used Change Order process. So the city is calling it Change Order 2, but the state is Change Order 1. Contractually, it's only Change Order 1.
So why do we have to call it Change Order 2?
So I can get the money from the state. Because that stuff that we approve, every invoice actually goes to the state to pay for the...
So the $62,000, half the way, comes from the state?
Yes, sir. Everything we pay goes to the state.
Is there any way we can distinguish that? Like you said, contractual or something?
If I make it 2, then the state will not pay. Say, where's 1? See what I mean? So that's the...
For the records, when we go back in 10 years.
What? I'm just, it's so, we trying to make it so, I mean, every invoice we pay, we put, this is true for all reimbursement. So when we pay invoices, we send them to the state. After your approval, we send them to the state. We get $100,000, they send us 50%. So this is how it usually works. And if I confuse them, I delay payment from the state, and I really don't wanna do that.
You get it? You get it? Anybody else has any more questions? No questions?
Did most of you before you left?
I don't know.
He went to the restroom. Take over.
Did he say he had a question?
I know.
He did.
So are you guys okay with just having it, Change Order Number 2?
It makes sense.
It does?
For unforeseen, yeah.
I'm still confused about it, I don't know. I'm sorry, I don't know why I'm not getting it.
So internally, for us...
I get it, but how can, yes.
Yeah, Mariana's good. She's good.
Okay. Sorry, I'm gonna try to simplify it. So we had a contract, and then here internally, we changed that contract to add $9 million for the ARPA portion, right? So what we presented to the state as our finalized contract was the total of the $13 million. So to them, we have one signed contract for $13 million. This is the first change order to that $13 million project.
Okay.
So for them, it's the first change order. For us, it's the second because we added that $9 million.
Okay, now I understand. So why we call it now just 2 here?
For their records, because they have already a Change Order 1 for that contract.
So the backup, the original backup, I'm just gonna say, because if you come back in 10 years from now, we're just trying to...
Yes, the original backup was for $13 million, but then the final contract was for the $13 million, when we added the 9. So the existing contract is $13 million, and that's the contract that we're working off of.
Are you good, Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions? Discussions? You have a question?
No, I was waiting for a vote. I've got a little...
Okay, okay. Let's take this to a vote. Whoever's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, the ayes have it. Moving on to 9C, City Engineer Deeb, DTE, LED Replacement Phase 2, Warren Avenue.
Counsel Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase agreement between the city and DTE Electric Company for the total cost of $103,523.17, and authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. In addition, authorize the mayor, comptroller, or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from the street light, street park light, LG account number 101, 200926000. And the remaining funds for the purchase will be $350,777.83, and $83.17 outlined in 9C.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Counsel Chair?
Sir?
Nope, never mind. I'm sorry. I missed a word there. I'm good.
Okay. Any other decisions? Or any other discussions? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Real quick, Mr. Deeb, can you actually just give a little quick briefing on this?
Sure. So if you recall, about two years ago, we decided to move the, all the street lighting under the DTE community lighting to LED for, you know, saving and street, you do know, community lighting is where we pay for all our street lights, and DTE maintains, provide power, maintain them. If they get hit, they replace them. The entire city was done as Phase 1 minus Warren Avenue, and the reason for that is Warren Avenue years ago was considered a downtown district, and special lights were installed, and these lights were not DTE standard. So DTE did not support them. They did not have them. So they said we will do that as a separate phase, meaning that we have, instead of just replacing the light fixtures, the entire light pole will have to be replaced for them to maintain it. They update it, under this contract, we will update from Mayburn to Berwyn, the area of streetlights. And that's the current non-DTE standard. Will be replaced with DTE LED, and they will be maintained by...
I kinda like those nice light fixtures that we have.
Yeah, but unfortunately, you can't find them. So it's, so that's why you have multiple, if you drive Warren Avenue past Telegraph West, you're gonna see multiple, because they don't, I don't know where we bought them from. They do not exist. They're not street standard. The lighting level is also not standard. So the current LED, DTE standards have a better light dispersion, and they cover better. And then plus, they're standard, so they can...
So do we have like any, I know, there was an email from Imobi Dun the other day, our deputy comptroller right now, or interim comptroller-director, saying about that there was a master plan, then he said, oh, no, like, that was only for us. Do we have like some type of plan for Warren that was expected to be one day, and then this new administration kinda was like, oh, no, we don't wanna do that? Do we have any plans for Warren at all?
Yes. So we're currently in the award phase, because I'm still working with this for updating, well, actually, an actual master plan. But the Warren Avenue...
Yeah, come on in.
So that was a mistake by me sending it out to all city members, because I did not know how to use Microsoft Teams, and it said send to all city members. Even the clerk and everybody else got it. So we're in the current phase of awarding the Master and Environmental Resiliency Plan, as well as the Infrastructure Resiliency Plan. Both of those awards will be presented to council within the next month or so, after we do interviews with the candidates.
Okay, let me ask you. Did anybody from the Planning Commission have any insight on being able to maybe help construct the master plan? Like, the reality is, we have this commission for that reason.
We haven't awarded yet. So soon, so the way we're doing it, we're getting, we're getting a grant for it. So we're getting the state money for it. So we're doing it by state standard, meaning that it was qualification-based. You interview the top four, and then the award actually has to be approved by you first and then the state. So we're doing it because of the money situation. We, otherwise, we'll have to fund it ourselves. We're getting 80%, I believe, Mariana, 80, 20? So 80, 20 of the contract award is being paid by the state. So that's why it's taken us a little longer. This gentleman's helping me with, we did our first interview yesterday, and we have three more interviews. This is the selection process. After you select a consultant, you're presented to the state, get approved, and then to you, and you award the contract.
My thoughts on it, real quick, Mariana, if I may. I mean, if we're consulting with these people, if we're consulting with these people that are telling us we have this experience, we have that experience, I would like, I'd like some insight on that as well. I would like them to present before the city, like, let it present, let the residents hear, let people see what's going on.
They will be, they will be involved. Stakeholders meetings is actually part of it. It's just the selection first, the selection process.
I know, but even the selection process, I would like to know who's coming to present, say, hey, I would like to bid for the city of Dearborn Heights, and this is what I have to offer, like, let us hear a little bit, and let them come present before us. I mean, I think it's a good idea to be able to hear from them. We could do a study session and let residents ask them questions, let them, like, give them 15 minutes each to present. I mean, maybe it's being a little bit more transparent. I'm not saying you're not, I'm just saying, let's, let us have a little bit of insight on it.
Okay. We'll do that.
Yeah.
Again, they're all gonna come in front of you once the proposals are finalized. Right now, they're still in the beginning stages of the bid process, but as usual, you will have your opportunity to see all of the...
Choose top six, and let them come in and present before us.
Okay. We can add that to the steps, but again, we have to follow the state guidelines for bid awards, and then we can add on top of it whatever you want afterwards.
Well, just the top six, I mean, look, man, we've been asking for...
We only had four that were interested, and these fours are currently being evaluated. Four proposals, this one in my office, and then this, three? All right, three of them for that particular project. So we'll put us on it. We'll have a 15-minute presentation to you, and ask questions.
Right? I mean, I feel like the city, and not forget me, but like, let the residents be able to get some insight on it, and see, maybe they wanna give their opinion on something.
No problems.
What's that?
Taxpayers wanna know.
Yeah, I mean, let our taxpayers be engaged and involved. You know, everybody has a thought on our city. We live here.
I do 100% agree with you. But just to make sure you understand, part of the plan itself is the company going out into the public and asking residents questions, seeing their concerns. So the company, part of their plan...
Let's see which company we want to...
Yeah, I know. I'm just letting you know, like, also, when they do implement the master plan, part of the implementation phase is talking to residents, hearing their concerns, seeing what they think about their city and what can be fixed.
Thank you. All right, guys. Sorry, I know I get a little off topic. Next up is 9D, Department of IT Director Cooper and Court Administrator Atkins, Replacement of Court Computers.
Counsel Chair?
Councilman Ahmad?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of 21 Dell Pro Micro QCM 1250 14 Dell Pro 16 Plus and 14 Dell Pro Dog WD 25 from Dell for a total cost of $30,346.68. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account 101, 130981000. The funds remaining in the account after purchase will be $7,653.32, as outlined in 9-D.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? I know this is something that Michelle Atkins in the court has been asking for. They came before their budget. She said she was gonna figure out what money that they didn't spend to be able to purchase these. So I'm glad that we're seeing this before us, and it was before the end of the fiscal year, so that the money didn't go into the general fund, that the court's still being able to use it. I wish Michelle and her staff raised success in their new computers. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Congratulations, Director Cooper. Congratulations, Michelle Atkins. Next up is Park and Recreation Directors of...
Sabaznek.
Sabaznek. By the way, I've been saying it. I've been practicing. Sabaznek, purchase and payment of the Richard A. Young Center vending machine.
Counsel Chair?
Counselman Saab?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of two selective vending machines for the Richard A. Young Center. From Sam's Club, for the Richard A. Young Center from Sam's Club, as the lowest quote is $9,518. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payments from account number 101-692-887000. With the remaining funds in the account after the purchase will be $30.39 as outlined in 9C.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Long overdue. I want to say, four years ago, I came to city council for my first meeting. I walked into the Richard A. Young Center, four years ago, four and a half, actually. And I said, I walked up to a vending machine and said, invest at your own risk, is what it stated. That means if you put money and you don't get something, you made that investment, knowing that we knew this machines didn't work and people were still taking risk. It's worse than, that's the worst gamble I've ever seen. It's worse than the casinos. Uh, I'm surprised Lou wasn't there. Uh, but the, the reality is, this is long overdue, I've asked for this many times. Now, I don't know the cost, you know, analysis, but I left it to our, our director to be able to say, hey, it's better for us to rent out a machine, it's better for us to purchase. My only concern and fear is that when we purchase these machines, five years, are we gonna have to purchase these machines again? Because we know we're gonna see a sign that says, invest at your own risk. And so like, would it be better or are we gonna be making money? I don't know, but I'm, I left it to you, I had a conversation with the director, he told me this was the better route. So I, I'm gonna follow his direction and his leadership on this. Any other discussion? All right, let's not purchase at our own risk anymore. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Congratulations, Director. Next up is Parks and Recreation Director, Spirit Festival 2025 contract with Antonio's.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Which?
Constant, I'm sorry, you were the only one that said it.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the 2025 Spirit Festival contract between the city of Dearborn Heights and Antonio's and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city as outlined in 9F.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Sob.
Council Chair.
Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I want to thank Antonio's for doing this, they've been doing it since 2004. This year, they will cover up to $7,000 of any loss we had at the festival. Um, they've been, like I said, they've done it every year since 2004, except 2020 and 2021, when we had COVID. Uh, Mama Rita is really well-known in the community. She's a good-hearted person and we appreciate what she does for us.
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council Chair. Actually, I, I have issues with this contract. I do want to thank Antonio's, I appreciate the business and all they do in our community. But our Spirit Festival has been making money. And this is basically, we're just advertising for somebody in case, and for free, but in case we don't make money, they, they jump in and pay the money. The fact is, this, that this contract was presented even after the festival, but, you know, I don't like that, but even, I had to talk with the director. Him being new here and, uh, everything has been already set for the festival, so that was too late to change the contract. But the other issue that I have in the contract is, they still have the first ride refusal for next year. So I don't know, Mr. Friend, can you take a look at it and if we can take this off? Because I'm not voting yes on this, because I don't want to, I don't want to renew this contract.
Well, I, I actually have one other question on this too. Let's just say next year, the company says, says, hey, man, like, I'm just gonna straight up give you guys $25,000. Are we allowed to tell them we can't accept it based on this contract? We gotta be careful, you know? Like, I, I said this before, Dearborn, for its homecoming festival, takes a $50,000 sponsor, a $30,000 sponsor, a $20,000 sponsor, and a bunch of $1,000 sponsors. I mean, obviously, the, the, anybody that donates $50,000 in Dearborn gets their advertisement everywhere. Uh, and, and, and I will tell you, Antonio's has always, and, and the reason why Antonio's is here and, and what it does is, a long time ago, the history is, we weren't gonna be able to afford the Spirit Festival anymore. Antonio said, I want you guys to do it, and if there's anything that you guys lose money on, I mean, they came from a very good place and I respect them for that. I feel like right now, if, you know, we have a great director, he's stealing a lot of ideas that he's doing in Dearborn, they were able to capture some money. Can we also capture some of that money? That's the question I think that Councilman Ahmad was kind of reaching for.
Council Chair, if I remember correctly, last year, we made over $60,000. So.
And we made 75 this year, we made more money than we did.
Council Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I think, you know, Antonio's has been doing this since 2004. I don't know how many times they've had to pay over the years, but I don't remember anybody else trying to stop up to do it. And they've always been there. We don't have to go out and solicit anybody, they're a guarantee. Um, I think all the years that they did cover, yeah, they didn't have to cover the last couple of years, but that doesn't matter. They've been there when we needed them the most in the past, since 2004.
Council Chair.
Council Chair. I'm gonna go to Councilman Constant and then Councilman Sob.
You know, the Spirit Festival was the brainchild of former Recreation Director Ken Gribel. And there was a couple of years where we had bad rain and we, we lost money. There was a lot of fighting over who the ride company was gonna be and different things. So, um, uh, the perfect is the enemy of the good, but I think they've, they've done a good job. Luckily, we've had good weather, good crowds, so I, I think we should continue this.
Yeah, they believed in us when no one else stepped up to the plate.
Yeah, but we, we've become a lot more of a growing community, so we can't say like, Dearborn Heights has got a lot more businesses. In 2004, we didn't have that many businesses.
We need to have loyalty towards people who supported us when we needed them.
And, and we're saying we can keep an agreement with Antonio's, we don't just have to limit it to only Antonio's, I think. I think we can open it and say, we can have more than just Antonio's.
That I don't have a problem with.
Right, I'm all for giving Antonio's, I mean, look, Antonio's, with or without even having a contract, should always be supported because they showed their loyalty to Dearborn Heights.
They were, they're in the hard times during the, um, you know, when people were losing their houses, they were still supporting the.
What I'm saying is, but if, if a small business owner says, let's call Rand Assel, comes out and says, hey, guys, I, I want, I want to donate, like, I want to be a part of this, I, I believe in, in, in the growth of Dearborn Heights. We shouldn't tell them, no, 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 we only have a five-year, we have a five-year contract at Antonio's, and, you know, that's a monopoly, in my opinion.
I don't even know if we had anybody else step up and offer.
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
We did have somebody, and somebody did ask me this question a few weeks ago, but I was like, it's too late, signs are already out. But I believe next year, we have sponsors that are willing.
I, I don't, I haven't heard of anybody.
I, I have, I have actually multiple businesses, and actually, one of them is in the south end. And they asked, and now that, when I read this, it's really not fair. We should be able to put it out and solicit and put it and let people bid. Hey, how about if you have a business down in the city, comes, says, hey, I'm gonna give you $25,000 to put my name on the signs. I understand loyalty to, to our business that's in the city, we've supported the business, and they've supported us, yes, but I believe we should give other businesses opportunity also.
I, I think Antonio's will always support and, and always stand in the city. I think it's not fair to say, no, Antonio's, but I think it shouldn't be Antonio's with also powered by other individuals that say they want to come forward.
Council Chair.
You know, I know, like, for example, and I'm so sorry to cut you off, but like, in Detroit, here you have, you know, Dan Gilbert, that comes out and says, powered by Rocket Mortgage. 20 years ago, they weren't there. Now they're saying, hey, I, I want to invest. So we don't want to, we don't want to lose on that as well. Yeah.
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, it's just like the city of Dearborn, any other city does. They have a level of sponsorship and what they pay, like, you, you want your name on top, it's gonna cost you this much. You want your name on the second row, it's gonna cost you this much. And you want your name all the way on the bottom, that's how you sponsor. We just don't commit to one person, I'm sorry. And, and, and I have, I have nothing but, I eat Antonio's all the time, I have nothing but respect for their family. But I believe we should give businesses opportunity too. I mean, there might be a business outside of the city that wants to advertise in our city. There's nothing wrong with it. If they're, if it's bringing in revenue and the gross is going up, I'm all for it. We should not limit it to one contract, and I'm sorry, I can't support this.
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, Director, don't we have, I thought there was insurance for losing profit? Stuff like this, correct? And I think, Director Kim.
The only, well, we have liability insurance, obviously, for it. The other insurance, the key part is rain, rain, rain will kill us. If we had three days of rain, we're, we're gonna be in bad shape. Fortunately, that, that hasn't happened. So we do have rain insurance, according to the contract, for just Saturday evening. So if it rains a quarter inch on Saturday, we, we're covered to some extent. I mean, we spend $2,000 on the policy, it gives us $10,000 back, so we're really getting $8,000 from the rain insurance. It just helps hedge us a little bit. But, uh, that's, you know, where we are. I mean, we're, we're moving in the right direction, you know, will we ever lose money? It would probably be a thunderstorm for, you know, five days would be the only thing that could, that could kill us, you know?
But at, at the same time, this contract basically is saying, they will be the only sponsors and if we lose money, they can cover it up to $7,000. So where, where we say we can have more sponsors, or we can have sponsors that pay money upfront, you know, to be, to be.
And $7,000 wouldn't cover us.
Yeah, I mean.
Right, no, no, we're not.
We can't have so many sponsors to be, to be put on that sign and make more money for the city. Uh, so I stand with my decision, I think this is all right, for 2025, it's already done. I can approve this contract for 2025, but I need to move the.
There's, there's a limit of five years on this?
No, no.
This is 25, the 25 plus makes it pass.
I know, guys, it's 25.
Where do you see the five years?
See, I don't see the five years.
I, I see the first ride refusal for 2026, do you see five years? Maybe we should table this and have Roger look at it and take, I mean, just make it for this year, whatever passed. And it's already passed, do we need even to approve a contract if it's already the thing passed?
Correct, yeah, you, you have nothing to lose at this point. The, the festival's over, we know there's, there's no loss, so.
Did you have, did you have time to look over it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Let me know, and I'll sit with Director Zaboznek.
Roger, I'd like to see opportunity for other businesses to sponsor it.
I understand.
We might have a law firm that wants to sponsor the whole festival for $100,000, for example.
Councilman, this is not in the contract, this contract, whoever, just passed. Let's just make it for 2025, already passed, we approve it. Next year, it's a new, it's a new Spirit Festival, new contracts, new people, new sponsors, we move on.
What I'm saying is that this also gives them the right for 2026.
That's what I'm saying, we're taking this out, we're taking this out, we're only making it for 2025 and that's it.
Let's address all this, and then we'll prove it at the next city council.
Okay.
Refer it to.
Yeah, let's refer this back to administration and then we can bring it, clear the air, give all the opportunities. This is, this is a great discussion, I appreciate it.
Okay, sounds good.
This was a great discussion. Uh, who's gonna table? Uh, Councilman Constant, it's on Councilman Constant. Would you like to?
I move that we, uh, refer this back, uh, to our Recreation Director, our City Attorney, and, uh, bring it back up at a later date.
Second. Motion to refer this back by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Sob. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Parks and Recreation Director Zaboznek. Zaboznek. Wayne County Parks Village Extension Number 2, Campfield Center, Marquis side.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the extension for improvements to Central Park as approved by Wayne County Commission on October 20th, 2022 by Resolution Number 2022-737, extending the original agreement from June 30th, 2025 to a term to end on March 31st, 2026 for the completion of the improvement to Central Park. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement as outlined in 9-g.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Police Chief Hader, Police Department Auto Auction.
Council Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I move, um.
If you want to second it.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council.
Nothing, go ahead.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the auction for police department vehicles through JT Towing, a third-party auction house. The vehicles will be purchased through forfeiture.
Anyway. These vehicles were purchased.
I'm sorry, let me start this over, my mic was off. I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the auction of police department vehicles through JT Towing, a third-party auction house. These vehicles were purchased with forfeiture funds and once auctioned, the proceeds will be returned to the forfeiture account GL 265-000636200 as outlined in 9-h.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Comptroller's Office Budget Amendment. Anybody?
Council Chair.
See, yep.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the budget amendments as outlined in 9-a.
Motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by. You see a second? One, one.
Council Chair, I just, uh. No, I'll have a second for discussion.
Seconded by Councilman Sob. Open up for discussion.
Mary. Any of this, because it says no fund balance used to cover expenses, does this go across the board on every account?
Yeah, so, uh, for the AFG grant reimbursement, as well as the MEDC grant expenses, those aren't gonna happen, so those are in net zero effect. Uh, for the Safe Street for All and Safe Route to School, those are actually gonna be budgeted in the 2025, 2026 fiscal year, so they're being removed out of this fiscal year. And then we have, um, Fire Contractual Services being, um, offsetted by Fire Department Medical Supplies, as well as, I believe, motor fuel. And then finally, we have DTE bills that are outstanding, that need to be paid, they're covered by the additional, uh, buffer that we have in the streetlight GL accounts. So nothing's gonna be taken out of fund balance for this.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I'm so sorry that I am leaving the meeting a little bit early. I do want to excuse myself, Councilman Ahmad, Council Chair Potem will be taking over the rest of the meeting. I hope you all have an amazing day, God bless you and Happy Father's Day, everyone. Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you, Council Chair.
So Mary.
Yes.
And, and red, it says $3,066,000 or 66?
So that's just the change, it's not, the issue is that some of those accounts are revenue accounts, so they're offsetted exactly by the expense account, uh, that they match to. So the MEDC expense account matches with the AFG reimbursement account. And then you have the Safe Streets for All expense and the Safe Route to School expense matched by the revenue received from there. So those two items get removed. In reality, the only ones you should be looking at are the DTE, uh, utility accounts and then the Fire Contractual Services, Contractual Services account, so that they can cover expenses that they expect before June 30th.
I, I wish you did, uh, give us a tour at the end of the amended budget, so basically. Just trying to add all these numbers together. So is it basically moving, how much you're moving?
Uh, so we are moving $32,000 out of streetlights into, uh, three different utility accounts.
Okay.
And then we're moving fire medical supplies and fire motor fuel, $15,000 to Contractual Services, I believe. I believe it's 15 or 14. And then the, and the other two, and all the four accounts, which are the AFG and the MEDC, that was for the fire, fire truck that isn't gonna be done anymore, so that is being removed out of the budget. The revenue and expense account, expense are being removed.
Remove, so remove completely, like, uh.
Why are we removing it completely?
It's not happening, those, and that is not gonna be happening anymore.
So this is, a grant is not coming in, you mean?
No, but the expense is also not coming in. We're not, we're not purchasing that fire vehicle.
I understand, but this is, what about the grant, what happened to the grant?
The grant was available, available, I.
But we're not gonna use it, that's what you're saying?
No, sorry about that. The chief can speak more into that part, but he told me that that is not gonna happen anymore. They're not expecting to do it.
What's up? It's not awarded?
So we didn't get it.
Is that the same thing with the, the fire MEDC grant expense?
Yeah, then that expense was for the fire truck that was supposed to be reimbursed by the grant. But since the grant isn't gonna be happening.
This is the expense account. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, what about the...
That's why in parentheses I put revenue and line items that are being reduced.
I got it.
I know, it's a little confusing because...
Yeah, it is confusing to us.
It's hard to do it in a way that, because if I decrease revenues and decrease expenses, it looks like I'm actually decreasing by $1.8 million. On paper, it looks like I'm decreasing by $1.8 million.
I'm sorry, but I don't know how totally I missed this. But, okay, so we're taking $32,000 out of the street lighting. We're taking $5,000 out of the comptroller's salaries, comptroller's salaries?
Yes.
Okay, so the fire grant, $930,000, we're not getting that grant. It goes with the expenses.
Yes.
Then you go down to the state grants SS4A revenue.
Yes.
So what are we doing there?
Those are actually budgeted in '25, '26 fiscal years.
So you're taking those out too?
Yes, they're going to happen within July and August, I believe.
Okay, so where's the expense account for that?
I should say the SS4 expense account, and then Safe Street...
I don't see it. Do you see it?
You don't see it?
I don't see it.
Give me one second.
Can anybody see it? For expense?
These microphones aren't... Resume.
Give me one moment.
Is there a rush on this?
The only one that's really a rush is the DTE bills, and the comptroller budget amendment, since we're trying to get a part-time person just to temporarily assist us with some duties, so I don't have to rely on planner and...
Can we table this to the next meeting, so you can fix all the stuff and bring it back?
One second.
Let's pay the bills, though.
I don't even see a DTE here. Is it the street lining, I mean?
I mean, what am I cutting off on public roads?
Yeah. Safe Streets for All and Safe Route to School, the expense account is right under the...
Revenue.
Revenue.
So the Safe Streets for All and the Safe Streets to School?
That's an expense, and the revenue is a state grants SS4A revenue.
Yeah, but that's $513,324.
That's because we have a match for that one. We, for that one, we have an approved match that the city council has already approved, and we are moving forward with the two projects. They're just not occurring in this fiscal year. They're budgeted for in this fiscal year, so as a formality, we must remove them out of this budget to not show that we are going to receive the revenues or not going to be using the expenditures. So that, the Safe Streets for All and Safe Route to School, and then the Fire AFG Grant and Fire MEDC Grant expenses, those are formalities, so that we remove them out of the budget, since they're not going to happen during this fiscal year.
Gotcha. So where do they go then?
Next fiscal year. So, again, the MEDC grant is not going to happen.
This year?
It's not going to happen. It didn't get awarded.
Okay.
The Safe Routes to School is going to happen next fiscal year, and it's already in your budget. It was already approved.
Okay.
So we're just, again, as a formality, removing it from here, because all the expenses will happen next fiscal year.
So that's the same thing for Safe Streets for All and Safe Routes to School?
Correct. So that first-line item, state grants SS4A revenue, that's where the reimbursement was going to come for the 80% of the grant.
Okay.
And then Safe Streets for All and Safe Routes to School are the two grants that we had a 20% match.
Okay.
So that's why it's a little bit more than...
That's why I didn't get the 20%.
But regardless, the expenditures are not going to happen whatsoever, and the revenues are not going to happen whatsoever this fiscal year. They're all budgeted for next year.
Any more questions? Can I stick this to a vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on. Oh, we're done? We have no petitions from citizen, ordinance, and resolution. Moving to our new businesses.
Council Chair.
13A, Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the business license for 342 Bar and Grill at 3932 Palmas, outlined in 13A.
Support. Motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Conson. Any discussion?
No.
No discussion? Okay. Let's take it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to 13B.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the business license renewal for Applebee's Number 8085 at 265824, as outlined in 13B.
Support. A motion by Councilman Saab, supported by Councilman Conson. Any discussion?
Let's put the microphone out. This was one of the establishments that had a deficiency, so I don't know if Corporation Council has an update on for that.
Roger, any update on this?
Any update on 13B?
Applebee's?
This was not a payment. This was one that was cited by the police department. Roger, this was not, this had nothing to do with a payment. This was cited by the police department. This was not a water bill.
Okay, Mr. Fernando, one second, one second, one second. I'm sorry.
This is not argumentative.
Okay, that's... Okay.
Roger, this was a liquor, this was on the liquor license. Can I have a minute, please? This was on the liquor license review. They were cited by the police department. It had nothing to do with a fee. It was something to do with the, the police department cited them.
Like a ticket or something?
Yeah.
Them, going out to them personally to follow up, and they're supposed to get back to you, they said, by June 6th. They said, and when we went down to your office, it was just a fee. The citation for the liquor license...
Roger, there was never a fee.
Now, we've come down to your office and asked you to give us documentation other than a fee. What else is left for the liquor license? I know the citation, and they were wrong in the citation about the Warren Golf Course, because they had the wrong address. I corrected that.
That's right.
So now with the Applebee's and the other business as well, we went out to the location. Now, they were in a bankruptcy issue, okay? They're asking to table their liquor license, and we've asked them to clarify when they come out of bankruptcy. Please, you're just tabling. If you're saying we're not doing our due diligence, we are, okay? We will follow up, Council Chair, and let you know, but we've gone out personally to the location, contacted the managers of the business, and alerted them. Thank you, Mr. Fernando. Let's just go ahead. Are we okay?
Can we refer this?
Let's table this. You guys can take a look at it. I'll bring you back next time.
Yes.
Councilman Saab, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Councilman Conson, are you okay with seconding?
Yes.
All in favor?
To table it, yes.
Aye.
Please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Moving to 13C, Business License Renewal, Connect Auto Sales LLC. Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the business license renewal for Connect Auto Sales LLC at 4413 South Beach Dailies, outlined in 13C.
Support. Motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Conson. Any discussion? I see no discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving to 13D, Business License Renewal, Red Lobster Hospitality LLC.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the business license renewal for Red Lobster Hospitality LLC at 6850 North Telegraph, as outlined in 13D.
Support. A motion by Councilman Saab, supported by Councilman Conson. Any discussion? I see none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving to 13E, Temporary Food Truck, Tent Cart License Renewal Application, Burgerati...
Council Chair.
Councilman.
Protem, I'm sorry. I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the temporary food truck, tent cart license renewal application for Burgerati, as outlined in 13E.
Support. A motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Conson. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilwoman.
Okay, this is the business that I did the FOIA on, and yes, there was some things they did wrong, but I'm going to give them the benefit of the doubt and approve this, because I know people make mistakes and they learn by them. I do not have a fresh FOIA, so it's possible that they're doing the things right. So I'm going to give them the benefit of the doubt, but they, in the past, were caught pouring grease, which I have that from the health department, and they had trouble with handling of food, and there was something with a cutting board, too, that they, and they were not switching out their utensils as often as they should. But like I said, they were newer then. I'm going to give them the benefit of the doubt, and I'm going to go with it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. This is for a year, Madam Clerk, or a six-month? For a year, right?
No.
Six months?
Six months.
Six months, okay. I see no more discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to 13F, Permanent Traffic Control Device Handicap Sign on North Cali Road.
Council Chair. Council Protem, I'm sorry. I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the placement of a handicap parking sign at 6064 North Cali, as outlined in 13F.
Support. A motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Conson. Any discussion? I see none. All, whoever is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to comments from council members.
Council Chair. Councilman.
Council Protem, I'm sorry.
Well, I become the council chair now.
He's council chair now.
I am the council chair now. Protem. I would just like to thank everybody for supporting the new fire station. I think the city's long due. I think our firefighters deserve it, and I think the residents deserve it. And I believe that the response time at this new location are actually like 99.8% accurate, to the fastest response on the north end. So I hope we move the city in a new direction in the near future, in this direction, getting the city up to date on everything and facilities and everything. Also, I always talk about speeding. Please, whether you're on Zoom, whether you're watching any of the groups that are streaming or in the audience, please tell your kids to slow down in neighborhoods. They are so reckless. I swear, parents have no idea what their kids are doing in the streets. And kids... Kids.
Nothing from the audience, please.
And I say kids, because if they were adults, they would not be doing this. Our police department is going to go hefty on people this, in the coming weeks, so... Don't be calling complaining. Police officers are harassing your kids, pulling over your kids, because believe me, cars are going to be impounded. And we're going to be taking pictures next to these cars. Also, I want to wish everybody Happy Father's Day this weekend, and please cut your lawns.
Council Protem.
Councilwoman, please.
Yeah, and speaking of police, yeah, a couple days ago, I was going through Westland on Ford Road, just east of Newburgh, and I was stopped at a light, and I thought it was really odd that police officers were walking between the cars. I got money out. I thought they were collecting money. And what they were doing, they were putting stickers on the cars for people who didn't have seatbelts on, and up ahead were police cars that pull over the cars with, you know, ticket notes on their car.
Was that Dearborn Heights Police?
That was Westland.
Dearborn does it, too.
And I thought, wow, okay, saved money.
Thank you, Council Chair. Acting Council Chair. I had the honor and privilege last night of attending the LAHC Dinner. The LAHC President, our own Councilman Hassan Ahmad. Forty-second year, is that correct?
Forty-second, yep.
Yeah, very nice, and Councilman Ahmad has done a great job. I want to wish two all fathers, Happy Father's Day coming up. I'm sure everybody's been watching the news. There was a announcement by the former Prime Minister of Israel that the current Prime Minister, that over 50,000 people in Gaza have been killed, half of them at least, women and children, and that the former Prime Minister says the current Prime Minister, Benjamin Netanyahu, has been committing war crimes. I know our new president promised us peace and said when he gets elected, we'll see peace. Well, there's no peace in Ukraine, unfortunately, and no peace in the Middle East. So let's contact our elected officials and pray for peace.
Definitely do. Thank you, Councilman. We always wish and pray for peace. I do want to thank you for, and thank everybody who attended the gala yesterday. I'm grateful to lead an organization that's been in our community for forty-two years with different programs that actually Dearborn Heights take advantage of. We have a couple in the police department and a couple in the schools, and it's totally free of charge. Secondly, I would like to thank our Parks Director for an amazing job with the festival, and also the police department. I know we had some help from Wayne County Reserve and the state police, but everybody did an amazing job. Everybody was happy, and they had a good time. Also, would like to wish everybody a Happy Father's Day, all the amazing fathers out there, especially in our city, and a blessed weekend. Moving on now, any announcement for our city officials? Director, please.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just want to talk about a couple of items. First off, Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m., next Saturday, at Caroline Candy Library, will be our summer reading kickoff. This year's theme is Color Our World, and we'll be art-focused. So come on out and see ventriloquist Richard Paul at 11:00 a.m. and the Reptarium Interactive Reptile Zoo at 2:00 p.m. We'll be having other activities, prizes, and games. All ages are welcome, so come on out and start the summer with us. I'll be passing out some flyers after this. Next, I wanted to share something that's finished after a surprising amount of work by staff. I wanted to thank AJ, our outreach coordinator, on this. Our new resident bags, so hooray. An effort to educate our public, as to our city services, we have compiled a set of flyers and materials from a whole lot of departments to hand out to new residents as they apply for CFOs. Homestead exemptions are by request, so they know who to contact for what, and hopefully reduce some confusion. We also included a small hygiene kit and a mini flashlight as well, so let us know if anyone needs one. It's got information on garbage routes, and information on voting precincts, and something from the Chamber of Commerce, how to read your assessment notice, how to read your water bill. And it's translated into English and Arabic. We have a flyer, services on a glance, so we'll be handing this out, hopefully, to all the new residents that want one. So they come in with a lot of information that sometimes they feel they don't always get. So, anyway, that's all for now. Thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
Thank you, Director.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk.
Lynn Senia, you're Dearborn Heights City Clerk. We've been receiving a couple phone calls, and I think Councilman Saab had asked about this before, too. And it's regarding street vendor licenses. I just want to read you a little bit about the application and the process. So the undersigned hereby applies for a license under the provisions of the City Code of the City of Dearborn Heights, regulating the licensing of street vendors, represents that the statements herein contained are true and undertakes and promises to comply with all the provisions of the City Code of the City of Dearborn Heights in the conduct of the business to be carried on. It is understood that any license issued upon this application shall be revocable for cause and stipulated in said city code. On the back, what the applicant has to provide to us is a completed and notarized application for a street vendor license, two passport-sized photos of the applicant clearing showing head and shoulders, the driver's license or state ID, insurance and registration for each vehicle being used, as well as a copy of the applicant's iChat. In addition to, okay, they have to come to us and get thumb printed as well, okay? Just so residents know, we only have two vendors that have applied out in the city. So if residents have any issues with that, please contact the ordinance department, get, I guess, the name of the vendor that is out there and doesn't have a license, or they can also report that online, okay? And then, I'm just, thank you, Council Chair Protem, for the opportunity to attend yesterday. How much money in scholarships?
$60,000.
Yep, so that was on. It was a beautiful event.
Thank you, thank you.
And then Happy Father's Days.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Yeah.
Council Chair Protem, when I put several ordinances together, I was going to request, with permission, maybe if we can have, we put a blight ordinance, a fog ordinance, a reimbursement for our firefighters and police officers. If we can, if I can have, maybe, for instance, Councilman Wenzel work with me, if you designate such, on our blight ordinance, he's reviewed it. And although our Councilman Maxwell is very slim and attractive with the fog, the fog, fat oils and grease ordinance, she can help it, because that prevents the businesses from dumping the grease, and I followed Dearborn and Sterling Heights and some other cities that put one together. We have a reimbursement. I would ask if you can assign Councilman Saab, as he brought up the Vista Maria issue, but our officers went out 384 times last year, just responding, and our firefighters go out to a lot of nursing homes where they can handle stuff individually, rather than having city resources used, and help us look at that ordinance. And then with the truancy, the vaping, the vaping with marijuana, if, I would ask Councilman Bedun and Councilman Conson to help work with me on that language, if you should so designate.
Sure, if they would like to be on this committee, I mean, more power.
Sure.
Okay.
Let me ask, I know you mentioned police, but are we, the ordinance, is it just for commercial calls, or is it, because I don't want to charge our residents if they call...
No, it's businesses, like Vista Maria, so they have internal security.
For excessive calls?
Right. We went out, one of our officers was injured, but they should have internal, I know there was an issue with the statute in Lansing, but I think it's changed. So we're paying resources, they should be paying resources. Then the firefighters, it actually came from Chief Brogan, brought it up to me.
Roger, I'm sorry to cut you off.
Yes. Monday.
Yeah, that's the resolution, same thing.
Right.
Go to the chair first. Go ahead, Councilman.
No, that's it.
All set, Mr. Fernando?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any more announcement from, no more? Okay, moving on to public comments. You have three minutes. Please state your name, the street you live on, and your city.
Three minutes is a long time. Renee Murna, Indianapolis, Dearborn Heights. Thank you for voting for the fire station, all of you guys. Thank you for agreeing, and it's a way different spirit in here today. It just feels like there's been a release, where you guys are free to do what you know is right to do. One of the things, I've only been coming to these meetings since probably November or something last year, and it was an eye-opener, just to see how the city works, because, you know, I've never been to any city council meetings. I have to tell you, I am so glad that nobody said, "Where's the mayor?" I am so glad. Thank God we got over that. I am so glad. Thank God we got over that, you know? Okay, if he comes, he comes. If he doesn't come, he doesn't come. But man, let's not beat a dead horse, you know? I mean, it's his choice and, and, and let's get over it and work as a city. And that's what you guys did, and I'm proud of that. The other thing, I wish we can get rid of this issue. Councilwoman Maxwell, I, you know, we've been kind of going around to getting this paperwork for Burgerati, round and around. I don't see anything out of the ordinary here. I worked in the restaurant business. It was like cutting boards were, had scratches on it. The eggs were next to the lettuce, which got moved that day. And, you know, and, and the utensils have to be washed more often. Those, the only three things I saw in there. I saw nothing about the sewer. I saw that they did the inspection. Nothing to... It says that it was inspected, but it never connects it to Burgerati. And I've asked multiple times for the video, which you've promised me, this, nothing has it. And if anybody else wants this, if they can point it out to me, no place in here doesn't connect it to Burgerati. So here's the thing. I'm glad you guys passed it today, you know? And unless we get the video that proves that Burgerati did it, and if, and okay, and if they did it one time, fine, you know, let's find them or whatever has to be done, and let's keep moving past it. But, you know, this is the first issue when I first came into city council that came up, so this happens to be my course I'm going to die on or something, whatever you call it, you know? It's just a fact that I just want to see what's done right for people. If you say you got proof, I'm the person that's going to say, you better show me the proof. And I've asked multiple times for the video.
Well, you know what? Please let her finish. Please finish.
Well, she's talking to me.
No, 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 please finish.
No, I've asked multiple times for the video, and I kept getting, oh, I'll get that to you. Oh, I didn't have your phone number. I didn't have your email. I didn't have, she's got my email, you know, because we've gone back and forth. And you can't, like, give me a hand copy of the video. All I'm saying is, like, he's passed now. Let's get past this grease issue unless he's continuing to do it, and you guys have actual proof that you can bring the, the video up, you know? So that's the only other thing, and, you know, you guys are, like, doing an awesome job. I'm glad to see what's going on with the city. I see that the, the people are engaged now, you know, and that was the whole point of getting the citizens engaged with what you guys are doing. You know, everybody's working together. We, we may not all agree, but you know what? We're moving forward.
Thank you very much. And I think Councilman already, she said when we had that there was nothing from Wayne County, so that's why she approved it.
Right. I've said in the past, they may have done something wrong, but I'm sure they learned from their mistakes.
Well, I just wanted on record that I didn't see anything in the report that said that they, that tied them directly to it.
Give them to me. I'll show you. Give them to me.
There you go.
As it does, they were called out for evidence of grease, and this picture here, it took it off. Oops, shoot, they got the license plate on there too. Storm drain interior showing dumping evidence.
Right, but it doesn't tie to Burgerati.
The address is part of the whole report for Burgerati. It's page number two out of...
If you read the whole report, nothing ties it to Burgerati, even on the...
Okay, okay, we're going to move on. This is not a debate. We're going to move on. Thank you very much. They're already passed. They're going to be in business. Hopefully they stay clean. Any more comments from residents?
Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights. I just want to say thank you for approving the fire station. Public safety should be our number one priority, and we can always learn something new. And when I walked in here, I had a conversation with Angela, and I listened to what Hassan Saab said, and I learned something new. So just always keep an open mind and make that judgment, and I'm glad that it's done because our fire firefighters deserve the number one. So thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Any more in person? Okay, moving on to Zoom. Madam Clerk?
No one on Zoom.
I don't see any hands up.
You don't see any hand? Okay.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. All in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it.